Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the Johnston County Planning Board. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'd like to start by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could stand. Mr. Little, if you'd like to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to mention before we get started, if you are here on behalf of the Edward James tract, that has been withdrawn from the agenda tonight, so we will not be discussing this tonight. So if you are here, I wanted to let you know that that will not be discussed. I would like to just talk a little about subdivisions, and those are the first things that we'll cover tonight. The vast majority of land in Johnston County is zoned agricultural residential, which means you can build houses on it or you can farm it. Therefore, the purview of this board is not to determine whether a proposed subdivision is appropriate for an area, but to determine whether it meets the codes and ordinances of the county. So given that, we are final approval for preliminary plats. The subdivision portion of tonight's meeting is quasi-judicial. While we welcome comments and questions on subdivisions, please recognize that whether you are for or against a subdivision, any evidence you provide must be relevant, competent, and substantial in order for us to consider it. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, anyone that wishes to speak as it relates to any of the subdivisions on tonight's agenda must be sworn in. So if you would like to speak at this time, I ask that you please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you shall give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And this is your solemn affirmation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Mm-hmm. I have that next. Yep, thank you. The first thing on our agenda for tonight is approval of both the September and October minutes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because we were not able to approve the September minutes last month because they were still being revised. So approval of the September and October meeting minutes is before us.
I make a motion to accept as listed.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hudson and a second by Ms. Howard. All those in favor say aye.
Ms. Holmes.
Aye.
Sorry. Sorry, Ms. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. So we will begin with the Barrow Meadows subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. This is Barrow Meadows Phase Two. Owner is Kenneth Kennedy. Developers Kirby Marshburn Building Corporation and surveyor Sanderson Engineering. It's on Brett Road at Erpswell Road in the O'Neills Township. It's Corinth holders fire district Clayton Rescue Squads, 5.41 acres, four lots, proposed Johnston County Public Water Individual Septic. Traffic count for Erpswell Road is 900 vehicles per day. Brett Road is not available. This portion of Brett Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This parcel is within the environmentally sensitive area. However, no floodplain appears on the parcel. From the Johnston County land design manual, four-plus lots, developments creating four or more lots where no easement exists and where the parent tracks have direct road frontage that might be allowed, the development must dedicate a right-of-way meeting, the requirements of this section. A waiver may be allowed if determined by the planning board in pursuit of this section a hardship. It's created upon the property that provides no benefit to the safety, welfare, and quality of life of the public. This was, Phase One was approved in September of this year for 41 lots. This were going for the other side of Brett Road here, and I think the reason that it was pushed back and put into two phases was because he wanted to talk with DOT a little bit better and find out how they wanted the driveway. And he's here. Mr. Sanderson's here to talk about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? You'd like to be heard on behalf of Barrow Meadows? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Sanderson with Sanderson Engineering, 2485 Wendell Boulevard, Wendell, North Carolina. As was stated, the other, the largest portion of the subdivision was approved two months ago. This was pulled out because of the requirement for wanting to do a right-of-way. In the TRC notes that we got back from DOT for the previous development, Sam had requested that we do it as I have proposed tonight with a hammerhead easement and connective driveway. The property is unique in that it is separated from the parent track by a road, a local street. It is bounded on the north by the county line. It is bounded on the west by Riparian Bufford Stream, and it is bounded on the south by a collector's street. All of those, I can't get a driveway through. So the only place that we can put one is on Brett Road. The proposed driveway that is shown on the drawing, and I'm certain on the drawings you have, it's mighty small, but it, as required by DOT, it lines up directly across from the street that will be going into the other side. I have, I pulled it two months ago, redrew the intersection, and laid out a small street, a little cul-de-sac, and submitted that to Sam to look at, get his, you know, opinion on, could we do it this way in order to meet the ordinance as requested? And he sent back this particular memo, which I received and the county staff received on September 22 of this year. Says, "As mentioned on the phone, DOT would prefer the hammerhead design, the small cul-de-sac design works for access, but it would not be long enough to be maintained by DOT," which means if we had to put in a street, we would have to put in a private street and for people that live in there, assuming that we get four lots, which with the septic soils that are on that side and the Riparian Bufford Stream that's behind, we may not. We might only get three. And if that is the case, then there's absolutely no way that that road could ever be taken on as a state-maintained street. So the hardship that we have is that I'm caught between two different government agencies, one saying they want a right-of-way and one saying you can't do it. And I have to have access onto that street by the ordinances that the county has, and I did my best to comply. Also, if you look in the design manual, under the, on the same page that the statement is made that you can't have four or more lots on an easement, if you look at the top of that page, the drawing that I have given to you is like I Xeroxed it and pasted it. It's exactly the same thing in that, in the ordinance, showing a hammerhead cul-de-sac design for four lots. And so I simply request that this be approved as submitted. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have of me. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in favor of Barrow Meadows? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition of Barrow Meadows? And bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendation was denied due to not having a dedicated right-of-way meeting counter requirements, but I will concede that I also have seen the emails from Sam, and that is DOT's preference. And it is one of the approved designs in our land design manual if it does not have a street that meets right-of-way requirements.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion from Mr. Little and a second from Ms. Howard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It passes. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Edward James has been withdrawn, so we will move on to, give me a moment here, Mamie Road tract.
Yes, ma'am. This is, owner and developer is Samuel and Lori Wilkins, surveyor's Lee R. Hines, Jr. Its location is 200 block of Mamie Road, just south of Bear Road in the Meadow Township. It's served by Meadow Fire District and Benson Rescue. It's 22.15 acres, 14 lots proposed, individual wells and individual septic, traffic counts not available. This portion of Mamie Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement.
Any questions for staff? Who would like to be heard on behalf of Mamie Road tract? Please state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. Jason Wenzel. I'm an attorney here in Smithfield. Address would be 102 South Third Street, Smithfield. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Samuel and Lori Wilkins, both of which are here, seated behind me, well, one behind me, I think one outside. We're here on a 22-acre track, and you see there are 14 lots being proposed. Wanted to touch on that first. A previous proposal was made about a year or more ago where they were proposing 21 lots on this track. You'll see this is a scaled-down version of that where there are larger lots now, 14 lots, under the UDO Section 14-134, while a major subdivision is less than 20 lots. So we've gone from that category two to category one. A little bit of background. Sam's a builder, let me see that map, which I know you've got the big one up there, but I wanted to bring kind of the, I don't know how great you're going to be able to see this. This is the property we're talking about right here, okay? You will see up here, there's some lots that Sam built previously, not part of what we're doing here. There's some lots over on the other side of this little pond where he's built previously as well. He's been doing it for a long time. He's been doing it over 30 years. Where we're talking about here, this 22-acre track, and that back to you, I'm going to refer to that in just a moment. Again, all septic, all wells, okay? So we've got no infrastructure problems whatsoever with public sewer or public water. There are the host of conditions that are, planning's recommending, no problem with that whatsoever, all of which we think are reasonable. We don't anticipate having a problem with any of those. I wanted to mention several of them specifically. Number one was the mail kiosk requirement. Right at the end of the, that's the big arrow over there. Thank you. You could twist that slightly. That might be a little bit easier to see. Right at the end of that first cul-de-sac there, you'll see that little, right where his cursor is, that's where the mail kiosk is proposed. Number two, the pond, which is up at the top of your screen there. One of the issues that was raised the last time was how that was going to be addressed from a neighborhood standpoint. What is being proposed now is those three lots, one, two, and three, are going to have the entirety of that pond. So I don't think that's going to create any issues with either riparian or litorial rights there. Wanted to touch on the schools. You will see what is proposed here is a ratio of .48, 14 lots. The estimate is seven total students split between three schools. Not a very big impact either. A berm, if I can refer to this map one more time as well. Closest neighbors to the north and to the east, I think some of which you're going to hear from in just a little bit, you've got immediately to the east, you've got this natural boundary where this other pond is off the property we're talking about. Up here where you have the neighbor, one of the neighbors to the north, there was this portion that was a berm that previously Sam had sold to, to help minimize whatever that impact was going to be for this other development. While I've got it, sorry to grab the bag from you. There is a small cemetery here as well on the other side of this pond. The proposed layout has an easement going from the main road directly to that, so it's not going to impact the rest of that. There was a community meeting that Sam had out there to try to address from last year to now some of the issues that were raised, and at least I would advocate that this is how this process is supposed to work. There were some concerns that were raised. There was a meeting that was had, and there was an attempt to take what originally was proposed at 21 lots and bring it down to 14 lots to help address some of those concerns. I'll wrap up because I'm sure you've got questions and don't want to hear me rattle on, but 14-176 of the UDO tasked this body, the planning board, with reviewing the application and the planning director's report. You are to base your findings on the conformity with the applicable regulations of Article III of Chapter 14. The applicant proposes here a concise, limited development of only 14 lots on 22 acres. The minutes you have before you or the proposal you have before you, you would see that the maximum allowable density is 32 lots. We are less than half of what is being proposed at 14. No water, no sewer. These are going to be single-family residences, all priced at under $300,000. They're about 1,400 square feet. These are affordable housing. For these reasons, we would respectfully request approval of Samuel Lori's subdivision plat as being proposed. I would be happy to answer any questions, or if you have specific questions for Sam, he's right behind me and would be happy to address whatever questions you have for him.
What is the adjacent VAD, do you know? The voluntary agricultural district shown in yellow?
I do not know.
That would be our form.
Ma'am?
That would be our form.
You need to limit your comments until you come up, okay? Okay. Do you have a note on the plans showing a VAD? I did not see one. I very well could have missed it.
I don't see it.
I didn't see it either.
No, not that I'm aware of.
You have to have a note that says a VAD is within a certain
Half mile.
Half-mile of the proposed property. So that needs to be added to the plans before they could be approved. Are there any questions for Mr. Wenzel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in favor of the Mamie Road tract? Come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Samuel Wilkins. I am the developer. The piece that you had in yellow there, agricultural, we weren't, I was not aware of that because it was not stated in the last round of discussions we had.
Okay. I mean, it's a simple add. You just have to note that on your plans that the VAD is within a half-mile of the development.
Okay, all right.
And Preston could help you with that if you needed assistance.
Okay. And I decided not to run county water down the road and, because I'm trying to keep housing affordable, and so I didn't run the county water, so we just upped the size of the lots and we're just going to go to well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Wilkinson? Thank you. Is there anyone who has questions or would like to speak in opposition to the Mamie Please state your name and address.
My name is Edwin Peacock. My home address is 101 Monroe Lane, Benson, North Carolina, 27504. I am the adjoining owner in the Edwin Peacock tract, if you don't mind zooming in, near where the pond is, near the edge of the pond. All right, if you don't mind, Ortho Photos, because right now, it's grown, it was grown up around the edge of the pond. If you click on Ortho Photos, 2013, and you'll see a better edge of the pond. The pond is spring-fed, natural spring-fed. The pond has never gone down. It's never, only, I mean, it's always stayed constant. I know it's easier to say that that pond is crossing my line. That was a point that was trying to be addressed last time for Mr. Wilkins to assume ownership of all that pond. That was a question we left out there for it to be answered was water rights and ownership. My family farm is pretty much, half of what's left is what I've got there. I have got, if I don't mind, can I pass it? I got one for each of you. It's a printout from the deeds, county deeds office. It is the actual, let me pass them out first and explain what. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And make sure he has one of these as well for the record. Yes.
I have a good thing I printed that.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
The first page, if you look at, is a survey map, plat map, that was filed with the county when Mr. Wilkins bought the property. If you look on the map, it shows the outline of the pond as it is, as is in actuality, where it crosses over the property line separating our two pieces. Also, behind that map is also the, what you call it, the, basically what my brother signed over, granted over, the property as it is. It's in coordinates with the plat number, with the book number and page number. And then the last page is a printout of showing, I mean, I've got a desktop here, so I apologize for the printmanship, but it shows the pond going over the line there. That was the issue and concern that we had before. On the preliminary map that he had shown, and from what his attorney had just said earlier, was that the three property owners that would purchase that would own the pond as its entirety. If you look at that map, they've used the edge of the pond as part of the contour, it looks like, and it looks like it's drawn in to make the pond fit into the line. Now, you know, I'm not trying to be accus, you know, trying to accuse anybody, but it's either misleading at best or deceptive at worst. My concern is the irrigation rights to the property. This is made, this is also addressed last time. Mr. Wilkins was aware of it before the last hearing because we did meet after he purchased the property of my brother, which is, you know, the property has now, and I addressed him with the pond issue, with it being that the line runs across it. And he informed me that all I could do was contact my insurance company. That I did not, that didn't really quite sit well because I, you know, I'm not trying to be hard to get along with, but when you're talking about possibly HOA or another entity owning a pond, who's going to maintain the pond? That's another question. These three property owners, are they, you know, are they aware that there's a pond dam that will need to be maintained and kept up? Also, the added runoff that's coming off of the pond, because it does drain into the local ditch running along roadside. There's just a lot of things to address there, and I do not want things to come to a head and to have any trouble, but what I can understand is, he knew it when he bought it. He knew it this time last year when we had the last meeting, and he knows it now. I have not heard from him or any representative on him making any kind of attempt to at least secure an ownership of the pond so it does not become an issue for not just myself, him, or any of the future property owners. But that's my biggest concern. You know, you've got liability. It is an irrigation pond. I was around when it was dug out. My granddaddy was part of the FSA, he was on the FSA board. He was adamant, several conservation awards, ruined tile off of his property, had the pond re-dug. It is strictly for irrigation. I will not trust my child to swim in. I know full of fact it's at least over 30 feet deep around the edge. It has a deep embankment. It is, there is no shallow shore anywhere on that pond, and the risk to any children, I don't think he would want to see his children or grandchildren go swimming out there because I wouldn't put mine out there, and I would be scared to death of someone thinking that that was just a great place for people to go, for kids to go fishing. Because if you fall in, you may not be able to climb out. Just a lot of issues that I'm concerned with, from liability to the safety to water rights, also with the drainage ditch. If, if you look on that map, there's a little shallow area there, that is running down here to the right of that pond, around the corner that's on my property, it comes down. There's a lot of runoff that's going to come through there. If he's, I know the proposal he's got, he's got some sort of drainage easement and a berm, but he may want to look into doing that as well there because that's going to be a consistent problem in that area because it, when water comes off of my property, it will wrap around that top right corner of that pond, and it will come down. Matter of fact, it's part of the reason my granddaddy put tile there, and I know there's large culverts running all through that property where that one is, are running straight down back towards the highway. As, you know, as has been said before, it was strictly agricultural and the intention was agricultural. Trying to think, if there's anything I need to cover. As I said, my concern is what we just heard from the attorney saying that the pond is its entirety, which according to the map, and if I'm mistaken, I think Jerry Bowe Surveying did the survey and informed Mr. Wilkins in recent past. For it to change from that to what we're looking at now, I understand preliminary maps are preliminary. It's not written in stone exactly, but that should be just for what he has planned for his property. Should not be him moving landmarks and adjusting landmarks to make his property work. That's all I have to say.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you use that pond currently for irrigation?
We have not this year because it has not been extremely dry as it has in the past, but if you, you would have to really zoom in. My granddaddy intentionally, if you zoom in on the top portion of that pond, there is, it's hard to see on that photograph, but if you look at that center of the top end of that pond, there's a little bit of a gray area there. There is a piece of, a large PVC pipe. Am I mistaken? There's a large piece of PVC pipe. Because when my granddaddy took that pond, I was there. We helped put the gravel and wrap the gravel around it. So there is a, there is a place to hook up for irrigation out of that pond.
You just haven't used it this year?
We just haven't used it this year. It's not been, it's not been that terribly, it's not been that terribly of a dry year, and this year, he had beans planted, so we don't generally irrigate beans.
But you still do use it when needed?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on behalf of Mamie Road tract? Either questions or oppositions? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Camille Barden, and my address is 653 Mamie Road. Let's see, I have a few handouts too, so I'll start with that. Going by what you said, Ms. Hackler, at the beginning, that we're not talking about preserving the culture and the heritage and the natural habitat and that sort of thing that's in the area, and we're trying to stick to codes and that sort of thing. I'm not really as familiar as Mr. Wilkins' attorney is at code numbers and names, but I will say to be more direct and to talk about the roads and that sort of thing in the area. So first of all, on the very first page here, and I apologize that you guys don't know what I'm referring to, there is some pictures of the, nearby the pond that Mr. Peacock was talking about. And this very first picture that you see at the top of your page, that picture is taken next to his irrigation pond, and it's facing towards Golda Road. And so that is 1/10 of a mile away from the bottom of a bowl, which And so that is one-tenth of a mile away from the bottom of a bowl, which frequently and repeatedly floods with small amounts of rain. So at one-tenth of a mile down from where Mr. Peacock's pond is, there's fairly regular road flooding. And when a hurricane comes, it's terrible impassable road flooding. And so the second picture down and the third picture down begins to show even now, and after the droughts we've had in the past summer and it hasn't been rainy until today, this is the standing water that's there all the time. This is a permanent standing water, and it's basically a wetlands or a swamp, whichever nomenclature you want to use for that. And so the next page shows the other top, the other side of that bowl, the top of the hill which is next to my house, and at the very bottom of the bowl, this last picture you see, that's the drain that's been put in. But as you see, it's not, um, it's not capable of preventing the flooding that occurs. You know, even with it being dry, it's still upstanding by the road. We have some other, there's some other pictures in here that address the, the nature of the farm that we have that's right next door, which is heart of pond built by the family, sawmilled by the family, built in the early 20th century. We, um, we have this property there. We would like to maintain the rural character there. We've still got standing smokehouse, standing packhouse, standing washhouse. Our home is heart of pond. We do our best to, to maintain that character. I know part of the planning board's mission is to maintain the rural, rural character of our county, and I'm just afraid that this is, well, this is not the only piece of land that Mr. Wilkins is buying. He's continuing to nibble up land from our aging neighbors, and it's sort of swallowing up more and more of our farmland in the area. And North Caroli, actually Johnston County, I don't know if you know this, the American Farmland Trust did a recent study. North Carolina is the second in the nation for farmland loss. And Johnston County in particular, this same study says they expect it to be the 19th out of all the counties in America, the 19th in farmland loss by 2040. And so, um, the thing that's attracting buyers right now is our affordable land, which Mr. Wilkins knows, and the rural character. But if we continue to mushroom this growth, we're going to be killing that goose that lays the golden egg. So I hope that we can, can limit that growth. I'm not, I'm not against growth, but I do hope that we can do it sensibly. Um, one thing that I'm not clear on is, I know that they said that there was going to be no, like, infrastructure needed, but was that still true for the fire hydrants that they were talking about, or can you help me understand that?
I can get an answer to your question.
Okay. So if there are going to be fire hydrants, which I don't know if they can have well, you know, individual wells for fire hydrants, if that is also going to be taken from the county water, I don't know where the county water is going to be coming from. So if it's coming on from the Holly Grove Church Road down Mamie Road, then the, the things that are closest to the road that could be, I don't know what could happen, the North Carolina DOT didn't, did not cause us to have to tear down our century-old packhouse. But if it came up on that side of the road, that's our tobacco, our tobacco barn, our packhouse, and the pit that was used for dampening tobacco long ago. If it comes up on the other side of Mamie Road, then that, there's a cemetery against that road. So I don't know how they're planning on feeding the fire hydrants. So that was a question that I had. And I don't, I'm going to see if I had any other questions. All I was going to say is something my mother says, and I don't know if she's coming up here to speak or not, she's here, but something she says is, the only thing they don't make more of is land. And so we can diversify, we can intensify the way that we farm, but we're always going to need land to grow the crops, and we're not going to be able to grow our food in flower pots. So thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on behalf of Mamie Road? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Candita Boone. My address is 770 Bear Road. And I also have a few photographs to share with you.
So first, thank you for the opportunity to be able to come before you tonight to talk about our concerns. As a landowner with property adjoining the proposed Mamie Road subdivision, my concerns are around ongoing environmental impact, the infrastructure and economic impact of the proposed subdivisions. So to provide additional context, as shared earlier, it's important to note that since purchasing the property last year by Wilkins, he's already built 11 homes in this immediate area and more houses likely planned with recent purchases of another 3.8 acres on Mamie Road. So that is 29 houses within less than a one-square-mile radius. And I realize this is not Clayton or Archer's Lodge, which was probably not a big deal for 29 houses within a square-mile radius, but this is the Meadow Township. My husband and I live on the adjoining farm where we raise beef cows, goats, and horses. My mother has an adjoining 21-acre farm with an 8-acre pond. My primary concern is around the drainage and stormwater management. So the paved driveways, sidewalks, rooftops, and streets are only going to exacerbate the runoff that you've already heard about tonight. And so referencing Chapter 14 of the Development Code, Section 361, this should be prudent site planning should include special considerations for the purposes of preserving natural drainageways, maximizing infiltration, and slowing stormwater runoff. The land that Wilkins has planned for the subdivision is already dumping runoff into our pasture. So pictures in 1 and 2 are of a drainage ditch that borders our property. It's not maintained at the time. As you can see, the ditch has been filled in with the erosion from Wilkins' land. Picture number two is of the drainage pipe that comes out of that ditch. It's washed out of the ground from the erosion, and the runoff is going directly into our pasture and my mother's 8-acre pond. As you've already heard, we experience recurring flooding of Mamie Road. 3 and 4 show water standing on both sides of the road. That photograph is from the summer. There was no hurricane. That is just an actual storm that came through. And if you drive over there right now, you'll see an oily sheen water standing beside the road on both sides in the same section. And as mentioned earlier, the tile under Mamie Road, well, it's collapsed from the erosion. In photograph 5, you'll see a picture of Holly Grove Church. That is on Holly Grove Church Road, which is a downstream property. It's flooded twice since Wilkins began his development. The church fellowship hall and the parking lot were flooded. You can see the neighbor kayaking in the church parking lot after the water was receded. According to the neighbor, both times we had water almost to the top of the fence. And that fence is in the background of the photograph. It's a four-feet-high fence. In pictures 6 and 7 are the 8-acre pond that my mother owns, and that adjoins the subdivision. It's currently being fed by streams and runoff from the current development that we've experienced. What's going to happen to this pond when it's filled with pollutants from the street and stormwater runoff from the subdivision? Section 14356 from the Development Code states that the plan should be compatible with the positive character of the surrounding area in terms of both existing character and desired future character. I'm not sure how adding a subdivision in the Meadow Township is consistent with our positive character. Please reference pictures 8 through 11. These are from the homes that Wilkins has already built in our neighborhood in the last year. Picture 8 is on Mamie Road. This homeowner dumps his scrap air conditioners in his yard. That picture is recent as of Saturday. Pictures 9 and 10 is also on Mamie Road in one of the new homes that Wilkins built. Either the homeowner or Wilkins is burning construction debris in the side yard. And picture 10 is on an adjoining Bear Road. This is not necessarily reflective of the homeowner, but of Wilkins' construction practices. This brand-new home is already experiencing frequent driveway and yard flooding. So back to continuing with character, future character, the guiding document in draft now is the New Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which focuses on rural conservation and moves growth towards the municipalities. How, again, does the subdivision in the Meadow Township align with this guiding document? Also, as highlighted earlier, I was going to talk about a few inconsistencies of the proposed plat, one being our farm is not listed as a voluntary ag district. This distinction is not noted or reflected in the plat. In picture 12, the plat reflects a proposed riparian buffer. However, that is on someone else's land. That property does not belong to Wilkins. And lastly, I also included the drawing that Mr. Peacock referenced earlier from orthophotos from the GIS, albeit minimal. The reflect, it does reflect the pond water on to Peacock's property. Regarding infrastructure, although it's reflected that the school is under capacity and can accommodate the new families from the proposed subdivision, one employee stated when she heard about this, one Meadow employee, "We physically don't have room in our schools for more kids. I do know Meadow can't take on anything else. Our data manager can't even keep up with the kids that we have now. Our social worker is stretched to the max." Also, please consider the carpool line in the afternoon on Highway 50 around 3:00 p.m. on any school day. The particular one you have is picture 15. It's not unusual for the carpool line to be backed up to Highway 96 for Meadow School. One Facebook poster commented, "Traffic on a major highway should not be this dangerous because of a school carpool line." Lastly, I have concerns regarding the negative impact of the property value of my home, my land, and the surrounding homes. There are at least five custom homes within a one-mile radius of this proposed subdivision. The proposal is to add 14 starter homes of approximately 1,400 square feet, in addition to the 11 and probably more that will be built. While I appreciate the potential tax revenue for these properties, I encourage you to consider the impact to your home's value if this subdivision was placed next to yours. Thank you for your time, and in closing, I respectfully request that you deny the approval for the Mamie Road subdivision tonight and in any future forums. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard with new and different information than what we've already heard? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Tony Stansel. I live at 3280 Beasley Road, Benson, NC. And I have property, probably within about 100 yards of where Mr. Wilkins is building this land. As a matter of fact, my wife's brother and Mr. Cheryl Peacock, I mean, my wife's father and Mr. Cheryl Peacock are brothers. And this land that we own, my wife is the fifth generation. My daughter stays on this property. It's one of the houses that Candy was talking about, about custom homes. My grandchildren will be the seventh. And I'm just an old country boy. These being hog houses or little hog pens and chicken houses and everything on this property. And I raise hogs. I don't raise them to sell. I raise them for myself and for my daughter, and I raise a couple of extra ones for a neighbor that wants one or to try to, uh, help with the feed bill. I've got horses, granddaughter, I've always had horses. My father farmed with mules. It's just in my family and in my blood. My grandchildren love it. My daughter loves it. And these big cows on this property. And the question that I've got is, take for example, this week, no, it was last week, they were digging potatoes in a field, and a man from New York that stays in one of these houses didn't even know what it is. So if I put a few hogs, and hogs is going to put off odor, I don't have many seeds at the most, and I put my cows in there, if they get a little scent, am I going to be told I can't do that anymore, and I've been doing it for generations? It's in my blood? I don't understand that. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Stansel, where is your property up there?
Uh, I'm across the road back towards 242.
Okay.
I've got 14 acres there.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Please state your name and address.
My name's Charles Robert Bearford Jr. I have interest in three properties on Mamie Road between Golda Road and Bear Road. Mr. Wilkins has a very serious water problem, as you've already heard, with the flooding from the pond. If you'll look at that map, down Mamie Road to where they described the flooding. The land erosion has filled the creek slam up, and that's why it continues to flood. He had no waterway or nowhere for water runoff. I was born down there. This creek was six foot wide, four foot deep at one time. Now it's not even shoe-deep. From the pond down to the culvert that sunk under the road, there's three sets of drainage pipes that dump out into the ditch on state property. The state didn't put them in. When it comes to downpouring rain, the pipes spill out into the road, the road's completely flooded out from this water drainage. There was pictures showed, I was told at the last board meeting, about where the road was flooded, and there was cars in that flooded road. And the land I have interest in at 550 Mamie Road, right now as we speak, there's water up in the yard already, and it's not rained real hard today. This water has been there all summer long. When a downpouring rain comes, the whole driveway's flooded out, and it's hard to get into it. The interest in the properties I have is at 550 Mamie Road, 570 Mamie Road, and 551 Mamie Road across the road from 550 Mamie Road. 551 is where the creek is from the land erosion that's filled it up. Like, when a hurricane comes, that road's flooded out all the way down to the other side of my adjoining property on 570 Mamie Road to where the pond, the pond is of Miss Karen Barres. I'm an overseer of that pond. The land erosion has been carried over 1,000 foot through where the creek was and filled up a canal that was dug for that pond to, it's only ankle-deep now. It was 10-foot wide, four-foot deep. As I said, I'm the overseer of T. Barren Corporation. I've seen the water running across the dam. He has a major water issue. He has a major water issue with the drainage. And I don't know what the resolution will be. And as was stated, from the runoff from the housing development, the pond's gonna capture all types of debris, oil, gas, dirt deposits, rubber, trash. And at this time, I asked that the planning board to deny building this housing development any further. And I am grateful for you hearing me out on this. You've already seen the pictures of the flooding, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barford. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard who has new and different information than what we've already heard? Come forward, sir. Have your name and address, please.
My name is Timmy McLam. My address is 7552 North Carolina Highway 96 South, Benson, North Carolina.
Thank you.
My concern, or what I want to talk to you about, nobody's mentioned it tonight, but this property that Mr. Wilkins bought is a, it's not a flat piece of property. It's elevated. I'm a farmer. I farmed the land that Mr. Peacock was talking about on the other end. I farmed the land across Mamie Road, if you would move the photo. Okay, this field right here, right across the road from the pond, and then this next field right here. There is such a slope on that property. My, my father-in-law, whenever he was farming, and then whenever he retired, I started farming. There was a grassed waterway along, on the top side of Mamie Road. We kept that waterway maintained. He put in some covets to try to take the water out of that grassed waterway into the ditch on Mamie Road. The land's grown up now with weeds that haven't been farmed in, I guess, two, two or three years now. I know there's been a lot of erosion, and like I say, I don't know what the elevation would be from the, from Bear Road down to Mamie Road. I would guess it would probably be close to a 10-foot drop. All that water is coming down where the section of trees is beside Mamie Road is just a wetland. It's a swamp. It's always been a swampy area. But now it's even worse. This field that I farm here, I lease it from another landowner. But all along the, I guess it'd be the north side of that field, where it stays so wet, we can't farm it. It's just wet all the time, standing water. That, that farm, I think, on the FSA map, or that field, is probably like 12, 12 or 13 acres. We'd probably lose an acre or two around the field where it's, it stays wet and we can't farm it. Anyway, the water is a, is a main concern, and like I said, as a farmer, you know, we, we lose acres that we have to pay lease for. So that's my concern, what I had to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please give us your name and address.
Karen Barber, 563 T-Bar Road. I'm the owner of the eight-acre pond that, where the water comes from up on the highway. And I'm not addressing the water, but this is what I need to say, and I'm saying this with respect to you. The decision that you make affects my life, my grandchildren, great-grandchildren. I've been there for 60-something years. Irrigated out of the pond, worked, farmed. And last weekend, put on some rubber boots and did something I hadn't done before. Went through the woods on my land and on Mr. Wilkins' land, crossed over where it's grown up and you can't see. I walked in ruts that was deep at, in other words, above my knee. So we're talking anywhere 24 inches, whatever. But as I said, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, the decision y'all make affects all of our lives, seven people. And with respect, if you do not turn it down, I would greatly appreciate you coming out there. I'll buy each one of you a pair of boots and walk with me and see, physically see, because it does, physically, this doesn't show what's really going on in there. You have to see it with your eyes, just like I did. I thought I, I thought I knew, but nothing. It's very emotional, the decision that y'all make affects our lives. And as I said, with respect, I ask you to come out there and walk it with me and anyone else that wants to and see. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak with new information? Please come forward. We have a couple of questions that, if you would be so kind as to answer. We had questions about how the fire hydrants were feeding, and certainly, of course, drainage and water issues on these properties.
There won't be no fire hydrants, because there's not county water available.
Okay.
The only way you could get water down through this property is off of Bear Road, because it's not down to other sections of highway that come around and up and around it. Bear Road's the only road that has county water on it. And I decided not to run the county water, like I told you, to keep the, everything affordable and just upsize the lots. But there was a couple of things that were said that that's not true. And one of them has been that, you know, since I've started, that there's been two floods at the church, and you showed photographs with people in canoes. That was brought up at the last meeting, and that was, that was something that was from a hurricane way before I ever started building. And another thing is, I've got a map here, a loaded-up map. I'll show you where the water problem's at, and it's not coming from my property. Right here is Miss Karen Barber's pond, the lake was just up here. Okay, there's a swamp right here. There's a swamp right here. And there's a water supply that comes off this field, and it runs 24 sides, just running right now. And when it rains, it, it really goes to town. And there's a lot of water coming down through here, and it goes down this way and into the head of this pond. That's the upside. The other side's right here. This is a swamp, and there's, there's, there's land that, there's a big field back here that drains this way. So the two impacts of water is from the upside and the downside. This little pond right here has got a control, it's got a control mechanism that lets just a little bit of water out. As the water comes up on the land, it lets a little bit out. It's not a great big amount. And as far as irrigation, I've been out here, I've not seen them irrigated out of this pond, not one time. So I'm, I'm out there all the time. I mean, I do have a thing to do to, to help. I even sold these people a buffer. This, this right here was sold to these people right here as a buffer. And the guy that was up here that said he controlled the pond, that he works the pond, he approached me about cleaning out this stuff, and I told him that it's not the right thing to do, because you got to have an engineer to tell you what's what. And I've hired an engineer to look at this property, and he assures me that everything that I've got on my property is something that he can give you a plan with, and will give you a plan to the county, to make sure that my stuff that I'm doing will not impact anything. So that being said, the guy that was up here talking about being a maintainer of the pond, he told me that down right here, stopped up, and on down here, stopped up, that will not let the water flow. So it's, it's a issue of maybe getting the Army Corps of Engineers out there, if they want to get together. They don't need to look, to me, is the problem. They need to look downstream, because this part of the county is neglected by the state, because it, even the roads are neglected somewhat, because it's the high, it's the back forty, so to speak. So that would probably need to get with the state to maybe address any kind of issues that they may have. I mean, anytime that you got a major hurricane, you gonna have flooding.
Yeah.
So that's just, I just wanted to bring those.
Now, I do have a question. The survey that we're looking at does show the pond limits extending over the property line.
Um, well, some of that stuff is not accurate.
That's a sealed survey. That's a recorded survey.
Well, it may have washed out or something. I don't know. It may have extended itself. I don't, I don't know.
If the board member could share, or for us to, if you could share. Okay, thank you. If you'd like to come to the podium, you address your questions to us.
I know sometimes, you know, seeing is believing, hearing is another thing, because you're hearing different stories. But I actually, I've got a cousin that sort of has surveyed that property before, and I was in Tulsa prior to this, knowing it was coming up. I've not had a chance to get out there to him, but would it help make a decision? Because we were speaking on going out there and shooting a line, a survey line out across the pond to verify what we were seeing is the same with the map. I know it is, but, you know, is that something that would?
We have a sealed, we have a sealed, yeah.
I just want to make sure that was suffice.
Yeah. And it's 2021.
Yeah.
It was done by Curie Ball. Yes, ma'am. Come forward, please.
I wanted to clarify my statements, because Mr. Wilkins suggested that, I'll just speak for myself, that I was implying that his property was causing flooding. That was not my point at all. My point is that within one-tenth of a mile of this subdivision, there occurs frequent flooding. And so any, any homeowners there and the driving in the area, whether, you know, he's suggesting that we get the Army Corps of Engineers down there, I doubt that the people who are trying to buy the land there would expect that they were gonna have to get the Army Corps of Engineers to see that they could drive down the road. So that's the point that I was making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to make some statements about the church flooding. I go to that church, not this past summer, but last summer. It got flooded twice. I know I helped clean it up. And another thing, Mr. Wilkins just stated the reason why this subdivision should be turned down. He said, "We are neglected. Our roads are neglected in this end of the county. Our ditches is neglected in this end of the county." I just got, and it took me five years to do it, to get about 1,000-foot of road ditch cleaned out. And you know what they found it? The bottom of a glass Clorox jug, because when they cleaned it up and flipped it over, it said Clorox in the bottom of it. That's how long, that made them sense, the sixties. That's how long that that thing has been neglected.
Yes, please.
Two points briefly, since I think they're germane to it. One, with the survey issue, I note that the, the dash line, usually that's not a surveyed line. Only the solid lines are what was being tasked with surveying. And obviously, if you look at the GIS picture, which isn't the official record, you're just looking down from the satellite, that very well may be how that dash line came up. Secondly, you know, from a standpoint of where the water is flowing, you've got where those trees are. I mean, obviously, that's where the water is historically been. If you could have cleared land to farm it, you would have cleared land to farm it long before now. So you're seeing, back to Sam's point, where that water traditionally has gone is following to the right of the property and to the bottom of the property. Any overflow that's coming from the pond there is going to be coming down Mamie Road into that swampland to the south of the property.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand what you were talking about with the dotted lines, and that didn't make any sense to me. Can you please explain that?
Yes, ma'am. So a surveyor, anything that's a solid black line is what they shot. That's what they surveyed. A dash line's not a survey.
Those are property lines.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, but they're, they're clearly showing the pond extends over the property line that's on this, on this map.
The dash lines. Yes.
It denotes the limits of the pond.
Right.
It's clearly showing over the property line.
Yeah, so I, I'm not trying to be argumentative with it. I'm just saying, from where the pond is, where, whatever you're calling the pond, where the high watermark of the pond is, where you've got the embankment to the pond, where you've got the vegetation to the pond, could be part of that dash line. Without having a survey of the actual pond area, that would show where, where it's.
It's just right there in a picture with the property line crossing the water on the end of the pond.
Yes, the picture is worth.
Those aren't always, but the orthophotos aren't always accurate.
Yes.
The orthophotos aren't necessarily always accurate. Okay. I think we've heard everybody's arguments and questions and gotten the answers that we could get. I'd like to bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations, preliminary approval, subject to conditions and requirements and staff report.
Madam Counselor, I'm, I am concerned about the pond.
I'm very concerned about it.
Me too.
And, and, you know, we were just talking about, well, the pond would need to be surveyed to know for sure, that this might not necessarily show the true limits of the pond. This, this concerns me greatly, but I don't know how that would impact what we're looking at tonight.
Well, I think all we have to go on is what we've been given, and we're looking at a recorded survey. And it clearly shows the pond is on the Peacock property.
So I guess what my question is for you is, what is the question?
How does that impact the development?
That's a fact determination that you would have to make. You know, we have seen in other cases where there has been questions about split parcels and that sort of thing. You have to make the determination as to how that affects Article 5 of the ordinance. And consider that as part of your, your fact finding. And, you know, certainly, if you're not satisfied with the site design that you have before you, certainly you can, you can ask questions about that. Because, I mean, it's hard to say based upon the sketch plan.
And the orthophotos, which are not always accurate as well.
Right, right. And I think, I think I heard some conversation about shooting lines and all that sort of thing, but of course, you don't have that information before you tonight.
Exactly.
And the other thing I would just like to say, I know you mentioned that you had an engineer that said it was not gonna have any effect, but I'd like to see some detail of that, some calculations of that, pre- and post-development. just to see what the impact he says or she says would be from anything from a water standpoint.
I think, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please add your comments. But I think that some of us also have concerns about the true limits of the pond. And you have suggested that the pond would need to be surveyed in order to have an accurate depiction of the pond. And I would like to see that before I can say, oh, yes, the pond is 100% on this property, or it's not. I have concerns about the three lots that have the existing pond on it and whether or not that pond actually does go over onto the Peacock land. So I guess, can we, do you want to come back to us? Can we ask if you want to table it, or shall we vote on it?
It would be helpful. We'd be happy to give you a table to bring the engineer here and present that testimony.
And I think there were, and I think the one question was about the pre and post-development and stormwater statement. And certainly, we need, I believe we need the engineer to testify to that. We've heard a lot of fact testimony about things, which is perfectly acceptable. But for pre and post and that sort of thing, we do, for you to help you make a decision, the engineer would be helpful. I think the other, the other thing, I think I heard Mr. Peacock say something about they were going to shoot a line and hadn't had the opportunity to get that. So perhaps that could be helpful to him as well, to be able to have some additional time to get that done. But certainly, that's a question you could ask Mr. Peacock.
So would you like to?
I'll be happy to make that motion.
How long would you need? Would you need 30 days or 60 days?
When is your next meeting?
December 20th. 20th, December 20th.
And then the following one is January 17th.
Actually, that may be moved to the 18th because Board of Commissioners, the 17th is the 16th, it's a holiday.
That's right.
Okay. So Counselor, do we make the motion to table?
Please, you've had the official request for the motion, so you can make the motion.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this subdivision discussion and decision until Mr. Wilkins can bring back his engineer on the meeting of the December 20th Planning Board Meeting.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Hudson and a second by Mr. Little. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It's tabled until December.
I believe the next one is, the surveyor has a request to make.
Okay, this is for the Newseridge subdivision. We'll give everybody a moment to clear out. I think this is going to go real quick. Unless you need a break. How are you?
I'm good. Hang rezone, I think we're going to go.
Right, tacos, like crazy.
Well, ironically, we got.
He's preempted us.
The night I went, I started having contractions. So I'm wondering if that was it.
We'll wait until.
I love with both my boys, just spicy, spicy, spicy food.
I could have had pizza.
Good evening, Donnie.
Good evening. Donnie Adams, Adams and Hodge Engineer, 314 East Main Street in Clayton. Thought I'd come before you tonight and give you an early Thanksgiving and early Christmas present. So the Thanksgiving is, I'm tabling, request the table. This, once again, Christmas is, we're going to go ahead and move it to the January. I don't know what else to say.
So Donnie, I mean, let me just say that you've tabled it, what, four times now? I mean, truly, if you can't bring it to us in January, you probably need to withdraw it. I mean.
Maybe you should just withdraw it now.
I mean, what is, what's?
What's the reason?
What is the reason?
Because I don't want you to deny it over concerns about sewer allocation that has been debated for the last several months. And every time before I come here, it sounds like they're very close. But again, we talked a little while ago.
Sounds like it was very close to what?
Commissioners, so making, finishing up the issues that they're having with sewer.
Okay, so you want to table for another 60 days?
Yes, ma'am.
I really want you to bring this before us in 60 days.
You want to hear it regardless?
Me personally, yes. I mean, either that or, I mean, I think it might be wise to withdraw. But that's my own personal opinion. Mr. Letchworth may have different feelings in January. So do we make the motion again? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to table till January.
Second. Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Holmes, a second by Ms. Davis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Donnie. We have two subdivisions. If everybody feels okay, we can push, I mean, not two subdivisions, I'm sorry, two rezonings. If everybody feels okay to push through those, we can do so. Hang on just a second, I do have something somewhere I'm supposed to say. Hold on. Gosh. Actually, give me just a moment here. I have lost my notes. Here we are. So for those of you who are here for the rezonings, rezonings are different from subdivisions. And then we, in that, we act as an advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners. So all cases that we're hearing tonight go before the Board in January. So we're the first step of the process. You will have an opportunity to present and speak again in January on these rezonings. So I did want to let you know that before we began. Okay, so rezoning 2229.
Yes, ma'am. This is just a straight, actually, down zoning petition to rezone two acres on Ennec Road in the Meadow Township from I-2 special use to, back to agricultural residential. Owner and applicant Dustin Keith Jernigan. It's used right now as I-2 special use and it's vacant. And surrounding is all zone agriculture residential. No traffic count for that area. Doesn't appear on the comprehensive transportation plan, is needing improvement. And this is within an agricultural rural conservation area. There were seven notices sent out.
Thank you. Who would like to be heard on behalf of rezoning 2229? Please state your name and address.
My name is Dustin Jernigan. I live at 5616 Meadowbrook Road. It's right down the road from this property. I bought this property in 2013, I think it was, at public auction. I did not know that there was any kind of.
voluntary ag district.
No, I thought it was ag district. I mean, we bought it as a farm. We tend to hay down the path from it. We tend to land this there. I went to Mr. Braxton here and found out that it was not. It's some, Mr. Godwin put it in 2007, started a process of this. We really don't know why. And I just want to get it back in agriculture residential.
That's refreshing.
Give us back some land, right? Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this?
Staff recommendations, approval.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Oh, my gosh.
Pick one.
All right. So we have a motion by Ms. Holmes. We have a second, I don't know who was second. I think I heard, I think I heard Mr. Little a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Case 2230.
Yes, ma'am. This is a conditional zoning request, petition to rezone 3.64 acres located at 68 and 258 County Home Road in Smithfield from agricultural residential to light industrial or industrial one conditional zoning. Owner is 258 County Home Road LLC, applicant Adams and Hodge. It's for a conditional zoning request as contractor storage office slash yard served by Wind Fire District and Wilson's Mills Rescue Squad. Existing land use is agriculture residential and vacant, except for a house, one house on a portion of the property. It is also surrounding land uses on agriculture residential and used for those purposes on I-2 and used as Johnston County landfill and related services. Traffic count for this portion of 210 is 4,000 vehicles per day and County Home Road is not available. 210 appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as an existing boulevard needing improvement. And County Home Road does not appear as needing improvement. It is within a secondary growth area on the county's comprehensive plan, use plan. And seven notices were sent out.
Okay, so I-2, which is right around this same land, is more intense than the I-1 that they're requesting.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Who would like to be heard on behalf of this?
Are you tabling this one?
No, ma'am. I heard loud and clear last time I will not table it. Donnie Adams, Adams and Hodge Engineer, 314 East Main Street, Clayton. As Todd said, this is a contractor waste business. It's construction waste collection and haul off adjacent to the landfill. So it's a perfect location for it. We're going through the conditional zoning route. We meet all the requirements. We've read, I've read through the conditions and all of them are good except for number 14. And Todd and Brastain and I had spoken about it earlier. I want to remove the last sentence, the portion that says that portion of the property will have to be petitioned to be rezoned at the time of AR. So to explain that, we had requested number 14. There's an existing residential unit on the corner of the property. The fence doesn't go around it, but we want to rezon the entire property. My client, when he purchased the property, that was a condition of his purchase, that a family member lives in that home. And so he's agreed by contract to keep it in place for at least a year with some flexibility. So in our request, we had just added on, just made it four years. So we would like that to remain in place. And once that family moves on, then it will go back to be, it will become an office for this particular business. That make sense?
Yes. Were there?
And we do not have an objection to that. With the special use, it was different. You could not reside in that with conditional zoning. As if you make it a condition that it will transfer, then.
After four years. Okay, so that is legally okay and, okay.
So he's asking us to remove 14?
The last sentence.
Just the second portion of it, yes.
Got it.
And did this one have hours?
I thought it said 24.
It did, yeah. I couldn't, I should have double-checked myself.
Hours will be, hours number four. Hours will be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that correct?
I'm concerned about the seven because of the construction and, thank you for mentioning that.
Those hours were just brought from some recent ones that we've had.
Right.
Kind of like, and I wanted to put something in there.
Something, and I remembered that. I'm glad you did that because that drew my attention. So since we are making changes to 14, would you like to also revise the hours in number four?
To earlier? Yes, to earlier.
And also you are, and Sunday is, Sunday is also not allowed in the current hours.
Are you good with that?
Are you aware of that? Are you going to be working at all on Sunday? If you need to change your hours and your days, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, let's do it. Honestly, I do not know 100% about the Sunday thing, nor about the, how early to start. So let's move it, if there's no issue, let's move it to 5:00. I assume that would give drivers time to come and pick up the container and move to the next site.
5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
To 10:00.
Monday through Sunday, seven days a week.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Does 10:00 p.m. give them enough time to get back?
I believe so. Even in summertime, it's dark at 9:00.
There's a couple of homes further down County Home Road towards the landfill on the left-hand side, but none immediately on this side. As a matter of fact, just north of this property line, they're building a new wastewater treatment plant.
Any other questions for Donnie?
Are you sure 10:00 p.m.?
No, you've asked me twice. Now you're concerned, I appreciate the concern.
I think 10:00 would be.
I think 10:00 is sufficient, yeah.
I'm fine with it, whatever.
Okay.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for asking me.
Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard on behalf of 2230? All right, I'll bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendation is preliminary approval or approval based on the conditions set forth with any that you see fit and changing with your motions.
I make a motion to approve with revising the, removing the last sentence of condition 14 and changing the hours to Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Holmes and a second by, who said that? Mr. Hudson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And I know that you had other discussion issues. Okay.
So, and it was already mentioned before, so I apologize for that. So January 16th, which would normally be the Board of County Commissioners' second meeting, mid-month meeting, that is a holiday, that's Martin Luther King Jr.'s Memorial Day. So instead of, they had to move their meeting and they chose to move that meeting to the 17th, which would conflict with this body.
Okay.
So the request from staff is to move your meeting from the 17th to the 18th of the month of January so we can remain in the space. This gives us, one, we have the audio visual, and we can also maintain stream so we don't have to make provision for that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too. So do we need to make a motion for that? Okay.
I make a motion that we postpone our meeting from the 17th of January to the 18th so we can remain in this facility.
My second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Hudson and a second by Ms. Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all we have for you. Have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.